We will call this meeting to order. This is the Northwest Consolidated Zoning Board Meeting, September 19th at 6:30 PM. My name is Kathleen Willnauer. I am the chair, and at this time, we will have roll call.
Carol Kriska is absent. Mike Folks is absent. Jim Neese. Brian Lewenberg.
Present.
Mark Crumbaker.
Here.
Kathleen Willnauer.
Present.
And Melissa Morris.
Here.
And at this time, I will read a statement for the hybrid in-person virtual meetings. This meeting is being recorded. Please silence all of your electronic devices. This meeting is being held in the board hearing room with zoning board members attending in person. There is also an option for virtual attendance on the Zoom webinar. If you are using Zoom, you may participate in the meeting using your computer, telephone, or other electronic device. For Zoom participants, chat will be disabled once the meeting begins. If you have trouble, please call 913-715-1700. If you would like to speak, please use the raise hand function in the Zoom app to notify planning staff of your desire to speak. To activate this function, click Raise Hand in the Webinar Controls at the bottom of the screen. By telephone, you may raise your hand by dialing *9. Please do not utilize the Raise Hand function until the start of the agenda item about which you desire to comment. We will take comments from in-person attendees first, followed by Zoom participants. The Zoom moderator will call on individuals who have raised their hand. The chairman may modify these procedures as needed to conduct an orderly and efficient meeting. All public speakers will be limited to three minutes unless the chair designates a different time period in order to accommodate all the speakers. When your name is called by the moderator, your microphone will be unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record, followed by your comments. If you share concerns, comments, or points made by others, please refrain from repeating those comments, and instead note for the record that you agree with the previous individual's comments. There will be a 10 seconds remaining warning sound. To board members and presenters, please state your name every time you begin talking so that the comments can be transcribed for the record. This is a public meeting. We are presenting live and recording the meeting. Thank you. At this time, we will move to the agenda items. Are there any additions, deletions, or revisions to the agenda? Hearing none, I would take a motion for approval.
Crumbaker, I approve the minutes.
Do I have a second?
On Lewenberg, second.
Thank you. The motion for approval is on the table. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? The agenda has been approved. We will now move on to approval of the minutes dated August 15th, 2022. Are there any additions, deletions, or revisions of the minutes?
Move, accept them, ask red.
I have a motion to accept. Do I have a second?
Mark Crumbaker, I second that.
All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The minutes from August 15th, 2022 have been approved. We will now move on to board reports. Board of County Commissioners' actions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Michelle Cricks, Johnson County Planning. Since the August 15th, 2022, meeting for the Northwest Consolidated Zoning Board, the conditional use permit for Jack's Hollow, which was the drive-through Halloween event, was approved by the Board of County Commissioners on September 15th, 2022. They did approve it for a term of one year as recommended by this board.
This is Karen Miller, and I have an additional comment regarding that application. With your name tags, was included a letter. You might see that. It's from Joyce Whittier, a member of the public, and she was voicing concern about the signposting. As part of the application, our zoning regulations are written to allow the zoning board to decide to move on if a sign is not posted in the required number of days. The zoning board considered the number of days that the sign was posted and decided to move on, as is allowed by our regulations. But Joyce Whittier thought that that was counter to the regulations. And I'll just add a note that the planning department and legal department are of the opinion that the zoning board and planning staff went in accordance with our regulations and that we think that this will be an item in our upcoming planning commission training. We will talk about this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Are there any questions or comments pertaining to that? Hearing none, we will move to any planning commission actions.
This is Karen Miller. I'll also point out that you have an invitation to the training that the planning commission is hosting. It will be next week on Tuesday, September 27th. You'll probably receive another invitation in the mail, but I just saw this as an opportunity to give you an invitation personally. There'll be dinner provided, starting at 7:30 in our cafeteria in the basement level of this building. And then after dinner at 6 o'clock, we'll move to another lower-level conference room, a lower-level 200. And Peg Trent, our chief legal counsel, will be presenting on topics of interest to the zoning boards, the planning commission, and the Board of Zoning Appeals. And we have also invited the Board of County Commissioners to come. And some of those commissioners will also be attending. Thank you. Oh, also, I have a couple other items. The planning commission is working on two area plans. One is of interest probably to this board would be relooking at the area plan covering the Sunflower Army ammunition plant area. That plan was adopted in 1998 in response to the Oz project. Many of you might remember that. And then now we have the new Panasonic battery project coming in, and it's high time that we take a look at the land use plan around the DeSoto land that they've recently annexed. So just to make a note that this will be an area plan of the county land around that area annexed by DeSoto. It won't be any of DeSoto's property. So we'll be looking at kind of the interaction between the county land uses and what DeSoto will be doing. And Jim Neese will be the planning commission representative from this zoning board. Also, we know that Chris Iliff will be serving on that special committee appointed to look at this land use plan. Also, Commissioner Levin and also Commissioner Mason will also be serving. And we might have one more planning commissioner serving on. So we'll have a special committee to look at this land use plan. And we think that we'll operate it like we did the arterial network plan that we did. We have this special committee. We'll have a couple, like a series of workshops with experts coming in from like the cities, like City of DeSoto, City of Gardner, the Water District, wastewater, and any other kind of important players in the area. So we are excited about this, and we look to, at the end, get an up-to-date land use plan for that area. And then also, Michelle has a few comments about another area plan that we'll be doing.
Thank you, Karen. Michelle Cricks, Johnson County Planning. Another update to our comprehensive plan is actually going to affect two separate area plans. That's part of our rural comprehensive plan, and that is the airport compatibility plans for both New Century Air Center and the Executive Airport. The New Century Air Center land use compatibility plan was approved in 1996, and the Executive Airport was approved in 2004. And since the time of adoption of both those plans, there's been a lot of changes around both airports. And that plan, those plans, no longer necessary to reflect the current environment around the airports as the boundaries have changed for the airport and land uses. And the jurisdictions have also updated their comprehensive plans to reflect their policies and their goals. So we are working on doing this update, which is planned to take approximately 13 to 15 months. Excuse me. And through the RFP process, Johnson County selected a consultant who has experience in both airport master planning and airport land use compatibility planning. And they've done plans all over the United States. They've done a wide variety of plans, and the bonus is that they are actually a Kansas City area Overland Park firm. So they have huge experience, and we're very excited to have them as part of our team. A planning advisory committee has been selected of approximately 13 people to help us and actually help our consultants through this process. And they include representatives from the City of Gardner, the City of Olathe, the City of Overland Park, Johnson County Planning Commission, the Johnson County Airport Commission, the Board of County Commissioners. And we also invited the managers from the air traffic control towers also because they'll have really good knowledge of airport operations to help us through this process. So I'm happy to announce that the first planning advisory committee meeting is scheduled for October 3rd at 1 o'clock here in this building. The public is welcome to come and listen to that meeting. It's going to be a kickoff meeting, talk about the history, kind of existing land uses, and we'll kind of take that as our springboard to start drafting the plans and working with the consultant on that. After the planning advisory committee meeting on October 3rd, there will be two public workshops that will be conducted later that week. On October 4th, we'll have a public workshop focusing solely on the Executive Airport. And so it'll be held over by the Executive Airport, and the stakeholders around that airport can come and walk through, look at all the exhibit boards, talk to planning staff, talk to the consultants in one-on-one, have questions answered, and have an opportunity at that time to leave a public comment. The second public workshop that week will be October 6th, and that will be held at the New Century Fieldhouse. And that workshop will then focus solely on the airport and the environs for New Century Air Center. We felt it best to kind of split it up so we can really just kind of spotlight one airport at a time. Even though this is one planning effort, we're kind of, we're splitting them up. And finally, just also wanted to announce that there will be a website dedicated to this planning effort on the Johnson County website, the planning landing page. We're kind of getting those details finalized. But the public will be able to go there to look at the chapters of our plans as they become available. So they'll be, just as they're available, after the PAT group looks at them, they'll be uploaded, and the public can read through. As the process is happening, there'll be announcements there for the planning advisory committee meetings and the public workshop. That will just be one way that will get the word out so the public is aware of what's going on. And there will also be a place there for the public to also leave comments, concerns, to voice their comments on that webpage as well. So they'll be able to just kind of follow the process as it goes along. And after this process, the plans would go to both the Airport Commission, the Planning Commission, and the B O C C. So it's going to go through a three-step approval process.
Jim Neese, I've got a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Are those planning sessions going to be, can they be observed online? Are they going to be Zoomed, or are they going to be?
Oh, well, the public workshop is a come-in. It's not going to be a formal presentation. It's a come-in and walk-through, have one-on-one conversations. The boards will be available online as well. So the public will be able to see what boards are being presented to the planning advisory committee meeting or planning advisory group and during the public workshop. So all that will be available online.
Could the staff notify members of the zoning board? I think maybe we might like to know when that is exactly and how to do that. So could you please make a notification? We could get that from an email. Karen, I've got one other question. Do we have any applications for solar farms yet?
This is Karen Miller. No, we don't have any applications.
This is Kathleen Willnauer. If that's all of the board reports, then we will move on with the business before the board, which is application number NW22-241-CUP, conditional use permit for 12985 Lakeshore Drive. Kenneth Kark, applicant landowner, is requesting a conditional use permit for construction of a 30-by-40-foot accessory building on 1.9 acres on property located at 12985 Lakeshore Drive. It is zoned RUR. And before we get started, I am going to list the zoning board public hearing procedures. The following procedures will be adhered to by the zoning board when considering applications for rezoning, development plans, flats, conditional use permits, or accessory dwelling unit permits. The chair of the zoning board retains the right to modify or deviate from these procedures if warranted. So first, we introduce the applicant. We will have the planning office presentation, which will take 10 minutes or less. Staff will provide a brief overview and highlights of the written staff report. A copy of the written report is available upon request. We will then have questions of staff from the zoning board. The applicant will then be able to have a presentation of 10 minutes or less. The applicant shall provide a brief overview of the proposal and comments in response to the staff report. At that time, there will be questions of the applicant from the zoning board. We will then open the public comment section of our hearing. Each individual will have three minutes or less to speak. We ask that you provide your name and address for the record. If you share concerns, comments, or points made by others, please refrain from repeating those comments, and instead note for the record that you agree with the previous individual's comments. At that time, there will be further questions by the zoning board of staff, applicant, or the public. We will then close the public comment section of our hearing. We will have discussion of the application by the zoning board members with recommendation by the zoning board. We'll go to the Board of County Commissioners. And then the date and time of the Board of County Commissioners meeting will be announced. So at this time, Michelle, if you would like to give the planning presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Northwest Consolidated Zoning Board, Michelle Cricks with Johnson County Planning. This evening, I'd like to enter into the public record a staff report for case number NW22241CUPOL, a request for approval for a conditional use permit for a 960-square-foot oversized accessory building on 1.9 acres located at 12985 Lakeshore Drive. The subject property has a single-family home, a 1,200-square-foot accessory building with a 300-square-foot lean-to, and a 100-square-foot utility shed. With the existing accessory buildings plus the proposed 960-square-foot building, the total cumulative accessory building area on the property would be 2,260 square feet. Per Article 18 of the County Zoning and Subdivision Regulations, when lots are greater than one acre, the size of an accessory building increases from a base size of 900 square feet by 300 square feet for each full acre of property. When fractional lot areas are present, then the size is determined on a pro-rata basis. In the case of the 1.9-acre subject property, a maximum accessory building size permitted would be 1,170 square feet. This request exceeds the maximum accessory building size by 1,090 square feet, or approximately 94%. I would also just like to note that the 300-foot lean-to is not included in the calculation for the total floor area for the enclosed accessory building calculations. By right, the property is allowed to have a 300-square-foot of open-walled accessory building area so that calculation, or that 300 square feet is taken out of the total calculation. And based on the findings of the staff report entered into the public record, Johnson County planning staff is recommending approval of this conditional use permit, subject to stipulations. So here in front of you is a vicinity map with the subject property highlighted in blue there on your screen. You can see there, just to the north and east, is the city of Olathe, 127th Street to the north, and then along Lakeshore Drive, and then Johnson County there. And the subject property is located just a little north of Olathe Lake. Here is the surrounding zoning for the subject property, again, highlighted in blue. The subject property is zoned Rural District, or RUR, as are those properties directly north, east, and south. Now, on the west side of Lakeshore Drive is a variety of single-family residential uses with the PRUNA, the RN1. There's also, a little further south, some other single-family zoning. And then within the city of Olathe is also more single-family zoning. Here's an aerial of the subject property, highlighting the existing improvements, as this exhibits in the staff report. And along the southern boundary of the property is a 30-foot-wide access easement to provide access to the lot directly to the east. Also on this property are mature deciduous trees along the north and east property line, as well as along that access easement. And adjacent to that easement in the east part of the property and a portion of the north property line is a six-foot-tall wood privacy fence. This is just another view of the aerial here, kind of highlighting where the utility shed is, the existing building with a 300-foot square lean-to, the 30-foot access easement. You can see here in black, hope the mouse is up there, is the location of that six-foot privacy fence. And then here is the proposed accessory building. That accessory building is proposed to be set back 45 feet from that east property line and 36 feet from the south property line. A lot of homes in the vicinity of the subject property have accessory buildings, many of which comply with the size limitation prescribed by the regulations. However, there are a few that exceed the maximum size, which is highlighted here on the slide. The accessory building would be directly visible by three neighboring properties. With the closest residence actually would be located over 250 feet from the building to the south. This is a photo of the approximate location of the accessory building. You can see here, right here, you can see by my mouse, this is the location of that six-foot privacy fence, and you can see the very heavy vegetation that this property has. Here along the back is the east property line. You can see how thick the shrubs are. These tall, mature deciduous trees are present all around the property. I'd also like to add that when staff reviewed this request, that the existing vegetation and fencing was considered as part of our support for this application. This is a picture of the proposed location from that access easement. So again, you can see the six-foot fence, and the proposed building would go right about here behind the fence. This is a view of the subject property from Lakeshore Drive. It's a very, very deep front yard, and the proposed building would then be behind the house. Again, you can see all the trees. The heavy vegetation would be well-screened from Lakeshore Drive. This photo is from the property north of the subject site. This is the existing accessory building. And so with the vegetation here and this existing building, then the new proposed building would be then on the other side of this and be screened by the existing building. And this is just the other side of that existing accessory building here, made of metal siding with a lighter tan and darker tan trim. The proposed oversized accessory building would be about 16 and 1/2 feet tall and would be open on the west side, constructed of metal siding and painted to match the existing accessory building that's on the property, which was shown on the previous slide. And I would like to note that the proposed building would not be as tall as that existing building. The other one's a little over 20 feet tall, where this one's about 16 and 1/2. And this building would be used to store a recreational vehicle and another trailer that's currently on the site. A staff is recommending approval of this application, subject to stipulations. Staff is recommending approval because, one, the proposed oversized accessory building is compatible with the existing development patterns of the area. The request is in keeping with the county's rural comprehensive plan. The proposed accessory building would not adversely affect the public health, safety, or welfare. The request is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the regulations. With the proposed location in the rear yard, the distance from adjoining residences, and the screening provided by the mature trees and vegetation, the proposed building would not create an impact to neighboring properties. And this application does satisfy Article 23, Section 6C of the Regulations, which outlines the requirements for a conditional use permit. Here are the recommended stipulations for this application. I would like to note a couple stipulations that staff is recommending. One stipulation, number two, staff is recommending a 20-year conditional use permit for this application. And also stipulation number five, where the six-foot fence and existing vegetation remain in place and be maintained as part of the screening. And in front of you is a recommended motion if you choose to use it, but it's there for your, it's available to you if you want it. And with that, I'm available for questions.
Jim Neese, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I don't have an issue with this, but I have a general question. Is it going to be a general? I don't want to say this. Is it going to be consistent approval from the staff, do you think, in the future for somebody to have, you know, under two acres, to have this much existing buildings other than a home? I'm just looking for consistency in the future because we've got lots of small acreages. And if I want to put two accessory buildings on, the 10 acres of my house is on. I mean, is that going to be consistent? Are you going to be consistent with that? That's, I didn't ask a very clear question, but do you think I know where I'm coming from here?
Michelle Cricks, Johnson County Planning. I think I understand what you're asking. I'll do my best to answer it.
That's good. I'm sure I did.
Staff has had a lot of requests for oversized accessory buildings, especially in the southwest zoning board. They've seen a lot of them oversized or exceeding the number on site. I had, in the southeast, not too long ago, I actually had one on a smaller piece of property. That was an oversized building that went to the zoning board for the southeast. So planning staff is seeing a lot of requests for accessory buildings in general when we're doing our day-to-day planning work and doing our building permit review. But we're also seeing an influx of requests for the oversized buildings as well.
This is Karen Miller. So we're thinking that it's time for the planning commission to look at that again.
Right.
To kind of address your question, to see what would be consistent, what would be, you know, in this culture, in this day and age, what people want, what would be adequate.
Jim Neese, so you know, I think we did a good job of doing mother-in-law. Uh, Jimmy, so you know, we, we, I think we did a good job of doing mother-in-law houses, or whatever you want to call them. And we set up a regulation for those, and, uh, first couple that I think we heard went over the recommended, but they were, they were appropriate for the area. But it seems like to me that if you're seeing a lot of them, and this is on a couple acres, or acre and a half, you know, that, I think that's really good, a good avenue to really set up some specific guidelines. Right now, it seems like it's, oh, it looks like this is a good place. They got a high fence, and it's not gonna bother anybody, and...
Exactly. This is Karen Miller, Michelle Leininger, in our office, um, our, one of our planners. She's looking at those trends now, and she's doing some analysis to give us some more concrete, um, things to look at.
Thank you, Karen. This is Kathleen Willnauer. Are there any other questions of staff from the zoning board? Hearing none, we will move on to the applicant presentation, please. That's you, and if you would please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, Kenneth Clark, one-two-nine-eight-five South Lake Shore Drive, Olathe. And, uh, I'm available for questions. I think she pretty much summed it up with the, with the report that she had, but I'll take any questions.
Thank you.
Jim Neese had one question?
Yes, sir.
Uh, you're not gonna be any, you're, I assume this is for storage for a vehicle. I think that's what they stated. So my question is this, your, uh, existing, uh, building that's on there now, is there gonna be any use for, for business purposes?
No, sir. I, uh, I restore cars on my own stuff.
Okay.
Uh, that's my existing building, and this is gonna be to store an RV that won't fit in the existing building I currently have.
Hi, Mark Krembaker. I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Um, are your neighbors aware of what you're planning?
They are. I've spoke with all my immediate neighbors.
Any of them have a problem with it?
Uh, no. As a matter of fact, one of my neighbors is probably gonna be in this meeting here in another couple of months, asking one of the similar questions, that he's just moving in behind me. But, uh, my neighbors currently have, all of my neighbors currently have outbuildings. I don't know which of those exceed the limit, but all my surrounding neighbors currently have outbuildings. And, uh, I've already spoken with them. Nobody has any issue there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, this is Kathleen Willnauer. Are there any other questions of the applicant? Thank you very much, Kenneth.
Thank you.
At this point, we will take public comments of three minutes or less. Do we have any public comments? Uh, hearing none, we will close the public comment section of our meeting. Are there any further questions by the zoning board of staff, the applicant, or the public? Hearing none, uh, we will discuss the application by the zoning board members. Is there any discussion? Uh, hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mark Krembaker, I move to recommend approval of conditional use permit to allow for addition of a nine-hundred-and-sixty-square-foot accessory building for a total of twenty-two-hundred-and-sixty square feet of accessory buildings on the subject property at twelve-nine-eight-five Lake Shore Drive, with stipulations and for the reasons outlined in the staff report.
Yes, Jim?
Second.
Uh, Jim Neese has seconded. Uh, is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Uh, and our recommendation, uh, for approval, we'll go to the Board of County Commissioners on...
Michelle Crick, Johnson County Planning. Uh, this, uh, project will be heard at the Board of County Commissioners on October twentieth, two thousand twenty-two. That meeting will start at nine-thirty in the morning here in this, uh, room at the administration building, one-eleven South Cherry Street, third-floor board hearing room in Olathe, Kansas.
Thank you, Michelle. You're welcome. And we will now move on, uh, to application number NW two-two-dash-two-four-four PP. Uh, this is a preliminary plat at a Hundred-and-twenty-seventh Street and Homestead Lane. Uh, Brad, how do you pronounce your last name? Kickbush. Brad Kickbush and Gene Dykstra, applicant landowners, are requesting preliminary and final plat for four residential lots, uh, named Homestead Ridge on forty-point-seven-five acres. And at this point, we will hear the presentation by the planning staff.
Thank you, Karen Miller, with the Planning Department. Um, as you indicated, Brad Kickbush and Gene, Gene Dykstra will be, um, asking for a preliminary and final plat approval to divide this forty, um, slightly over forty-acre, um, parcel into four, um, ten-acre lots. Those lots will be a nominal ten-acre, which is allowed by our regulations. That means that each lot area will include, um, area out to the section line of the road. All of these, um, all of the proposed four parcels are at least a nominal ten acres. And, um, on the property, um, there is an existing residence, um, down here on the southwest corner of the property, and there's two existing driveways, one here at the, the south, um, west corner, and up here at the northeast corner. I will also, um, now that I think about it, mention two typos on my staff report. You'll notice that, um, the application number I have is the Southwest Zoning Board, um, twenty-two-two-four-four and Southwest twenty-two-two-four-five. Yes, I know, this is the Northwest Zoning Board, and I apologize for that. And also, under existing improvements on the first page, um, it, there's an existing home. It's not a metal accessory building, so I also apologize for that. Um, those were the only two, um, typos that I found on this. Um, so, now we'll look at the general area of the property. Um, this is a Hundred-and-twenty-seventh Street, and this is Homestead Lane. Those are both type-one carnet roads. They require at least three-hundred-and-thirty feet of frontage, um, onto the, the arterial roads. And, and yes, the, the proposed four lots meet that requirement. All of the frontages are at least three-hundred-and-thirty feet. Um, and just to point out, this, um, plat up here is the Painted M Ranch plat. Um, some of you might be familiar with that. Um, that is the plat on the, uh, northeast corner of the intersection. At the northwest corner is the Howard Zen plat. Some of you who have been here a while might be, um, familiar with that plat. I remember when that one came in. Um, this is a Donham Farms plat. So I just point out that there are several plats, um, with the, the same general density and, and a similar configuration as this plat in the area. Also, um, I'll point out these existing driveways here. Um, the, the applicant had, has, uh, submitted information indicating that all proposed four lots will have an area that meets site distance. Um, we did, I did receive a call from a member of the public that was concerned about site distance along Homestead, um, lane, and, um, I, uh, double-checked with the applicants, um, people, and also our public works, just to, um, you know, make doubly sure that we create lots that have site distance. And public work staff pointed out that these existing driveways were, um, put in at a, like, uh, two thousand five or six, something like that, and, um, didn't, did not feel that there was any, um, indication for alarm. Um, so, you know, we know that that site distance, um, is adequate, because there's, um, and a driveway entrance permit for this one. Um, this is directly across from, um, uh, one of the lots. And this is, uh, this driveway location is at the, um, south, um, corner of, of another one of the lots. And then, uh, we know that also these two, um, driveways have site distance. So, so we've looked at the, the idea of site distance pretty thoroughly with staff and feel, feel confident about that issue. Um, and just while I'm talking about public comments, I also today, um, um, was contacted by a member of the public that wanted a, a copy of the staff report, just to look at the layout. Um, that person did not con- get back with me on that. Here is a, an excerpt of the final plat. I, I zoomed in just so you could see the lots better. Um, staff looked at the minimum infrastructure requirements required by the zoning and subdivision regulations and confirmed that this proposed plat meets all of those requirements. Um, there's an eight-inch water line along a Hundred-and-twenty-seventh Street and along, um, Homestead Lane, along this portion of the plat. There's an existing fire hydrant, um, down here at the, um, southwest corner of the plat, and also up here at the northeast corner of the plat, um, to meet fire code. There'll need to be a fire hydrant, um, uh, serving both lots two and three. The most efficient way to do that would to be, uh, to put a fire hydrant within, um, six-hundred feet of this shared lot line of both properties, or, or just on the shared lot line. Um, but there's some distance to play with. One of the stipulations, um, of approval suggested by staff is that, um, prior to recording the plat, that, that the applicant shall either have the, the fire hydrant installed or under contract with Water Seven, and work with Water Seven. Um, and I, um, talked about the, uh, the type, type-two, um, carnet roads. Um, the roads, uh, requirements are met. Um, there's been a, a stormwater, a preliminary and final stormwater, um, plan, um, submitted and accepted. Um, and we also looked at site distance. So all of the infrastructure requirements have been, um, looked at and met by this application. So on page nine of the staff report, we recommend, staff recommends approval for the reason that, um, this application meets all of the zoning and, um, subdivision requirements. Um, we give, we recommend approval subject to stipulation. And, um, on page nine, number three, is that, is that, uh, suggested requirement that prior to recording the final plat, and for purposes of meeting fire and building codes, that a fire hydrant either be installed or under a contract? And on page ten is a proposed mo- proposed motion, if you care to use it, but I will point out that you, uh, might want to use the northwest prefix instead of the southwest. And, uh, with that, I'll take any questions.
This is Kathleen Willnauer. Are there any questions of the zoning board for Karen? Uh, hearing none, uh, would the applicant care to make a presentation of ten minutes or less? If you'd please come to the microphone and state your name and address for our record.
Brad Kickbush, one-two-eight-three-five, Homestead Lane, Olathe, six-six-zero-six-one. Um, I can field any questions. I don't really have a presentation.
Yeah, hi, Mark, Mark Krembaker. Uh, I'm gonna ask you the same question I ask everybody, which is, are your neighbors aware of what you're doing, and do they have any problem with it?
They are aware, and no problems that I know of.
Okay, thank you.
And are there any other questions for the applicant? Uh, hearing none, we will open the public comment section of our hearing. Are there any public comments to be made, either in person or on Zoom? Uh, hearing none, are there any further questions by the zoning board of staff, the applicant, or the public?
Yes.
Um, someone did just raise their hand. I was watching it. So, um, this, let me unmute them. There's not a name, because they called in on their phone. So this is phone number, um, seven-one-two-two-zero-four-seven-one-eight-seven. So it should be unmuted, and they can speak and state their name and address.
All right, Doug Hanson, one-two-seven-nine-six, South Homestead Lane, Olathe, six-six-zero-six-one. I just wanted to confirm, these plats are being re-zoned from rural to residential, or something like a single-family home for a lot, is that correct?
Uh, Karen, I believe the question was, are, are these plats going to be for single-family homes?
Yes. This is Karen Miller, and that is correct.
Okay. No other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. This is Kathleen Willnauer. Yes.
I've got a quick question. I know on a CUP, we have to send out a notification of everybody within a thousand feet, is that right?
Mm-hmm. That is correct. This is Karen.
What about, what about this?
So this is a preliminary and final plat. The preliminary plat requires public notification, which is the, the thousand-foot notice published in the paper and assigned. Final plats do not require that. But, so this is preliminary and final plat, and this does require public notification.
Mark, when we have these, there's a notice of everybody within a thousand feet, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other, this is Kathleen Willnauer, are there any other public comments? Uh, hearing none, are there any further questions by the zoning board of staff, the applicant, or the public? Uh, hearing none, we will close the public comment section of our hearing this evening, and we will discuss the application among the zoning board members. Is there any discussion? Uh, I would entertain a motion.
Brian Lewenberg. I move the board to approve a, application number is NW two-two-two-four-four PP and NW two-two-two-four-five FP for a preliminary and final plat for four residential lots to be known as Homestead Ridge, for the reasons and stipulations recommended by staff and set forth in the staff report.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mark Krembaker, I will second that.
Is there any further discussion? Then we will have a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Uh, we are recommending approval. This will go in front of the Board of County Commissioners. Karen, when?
Um, this will be heard by the Board of County Commissioners October twentieth at nine-thirty AM in this, uh, very room, which is, uh, the board hearing room, third floor, at one-eleven South Cherry Street, Olathe, Kansas. Thank you.
Kathleen Willnauer, thank you, Karen. Uh, is there any other business to come before the board this evening? Uh, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion.
Melissa Morris' motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Mark Krembaker, I second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.